Good morning ladies and gentlemen. And before we start the business, can I ask people to make sure the mobiles are not switched on or on mute? Colleagues, it is with great sadness I have to announce that the former Weir district councillor, Holly Perrowan. Holly was an Alderman and the leader of the Weir立的社会组织. She served for three decades as councillor. In 2007, she was awarded the MBE. Can I ask the councillor to stand up and move in silence? Right, thank them. Item one on the agenda, the presentation to honorary Aldermen or the Women. At the last meeting of the council, we unanimously agreed to bestow the title of Honorary Alderman on each of our former councillors. Collectively, according to view, there's 182 years of service to one of the Durham County's former boroughs or district councillors. In some cases, a combination of the two. Now, the figure of 182 is likely to be high because a lot of these people were also parish councillors or town councillors, and they were involved in a lot of organisations. And what we say there, commitment, drive, enthusiasm, their just dedication to the people communities they represent, should not be forgotten. And hopefully, their experience is being passed on to other groups and individuals in their respective communities. I would now call on each honorary Alderman and all the Women to receive their certificates, and we will pause after each certificate to take a photograph. Most electorate and continuously important are the technical. Joseph Armstrong. I'll get this next one right. James O'Gill, Sounds of Colony. Neil Crowe Austin. Michelle Hodgson, MBE. June Elizabeth Lee. And last but not least, Nigel Martin. Unfortunately, both Joan Marjorlin and Paul Stanley can't be present today in animated alternative arrangements. Members from Shrewmore join with me for one final time to congratulate all of those who have the title of honorary Alderman or honorary Alderwoman, and ask a significant contribution to the council. Right, we move on to item two. Can I have a minute, please? A moment for the minutes, please. Secondly?
Secondly, Minister.
Does the council agree in two seconds, minutes, as a correct record? Item three, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? Lord Morton, we move to item four, chairman's announcements. First of all, it is a great pleasure to place on record my congratulations to everyone in the region who were recognised in the Queen's New Year honours list. A special mention to Gary Ridley, Assistant Chief Officer, Durham Constabulary, who was awarded an OBE for services to policing. Former Durhamshire District Councillor, Durham County Councillor, and now Alderwoman, Michelle Hodgson. Stanley, who was awarded an MBE for services to fire and rescue. Doris Round, from Chester Street, who was awarded an MBE to services to local government and the community. And Christine Watson, from Stanley, who was awarded an MBE for services to the Fire and Rescue Service and the community. And ask the council to join us today in congratulating the recipients, together with everyone else in County Durham who's being recognised in the New Year honours. Secondly, I'm pleased to report that a member of staff from the council has been selected to attend the prestigious training programme at the Houses of Parliament. Rich Hurst, Education Development Advisor with responsibility for citizenship at the council's Education Development Service, was selected from more than 170 applicants to attend Teachers' Institute, which gives teachers from all parts of the UK a detailed understanding of how Parliament works. Those taking part in the programme then become UK Parliament teacher ambassadors and go on to teach students and fellow education professionals about democracy in the Houses of Parliament. The leaders of the council, email council members on the 17th of January, following the Cabinet meeting regarding Apeyhead Strategic Employment Site. You are all now aware of the outline proposal to relocate the county's archives, along with a number of other circuits, to Mount Osmond Manor, on the outskirts of Durham city, including the new history centre and registry office. In this email, the leader explained he made a priority to begin a public consultation for what should be located within the new history centre. The globing session is being arranged to follow this meeting, where all members are invited to fill in a questionnaire to help shape your project. If members found here to talk to staff on hand at the globing session and follow the county council meeting, you can find out more and fill in the online questionnaire until the 18th of February. And finally, all members are invited to attend the Sootherjett Centevi celebration in March that will take place in Bishop Walken on Saturday 3rd of February into 12am. This is the first in the region to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passing of the Representation of People Act 1918 that enables women over the age of 30 to walk on it for the first time. Anyone interested should contact Council Joy Allen, who will provide you with support details. And finally, this week, on January 27th, it is the Holocaust Week. Boughs are being distributed. Hopefully, all members, as a memory of the Holocaust victims, will be wearing that bough this week. That's nice, Chairman. Item five, leaders report. Can I ask the leader of the council to present his report, please?
Thank you Chairman. And first of all, I wish everyone a Happy New Year. I congratulate all those who received the notice of the New Year honours list and also all of our new honorary Aldermen and Alderwomen. Chairman, can I also join yourselves encouraging members as well as the public to help shape the plans for the new Durham History Centre, which will potentially bring together our county archives with other important collections as a single site at Mount Osmond. I believe this will offer a tremendous opportunity in the future to open up our rich heritage and history to greater numbers and we'll be seeking views on what should be included over the next month as we've outlined. Those plans are part of the Cabinet paper on Apeyheads, which was agreed by Cabinet last week and will be formally reported to council at next month's meeting. Today, I would just like to repeat that I believe this is a very exciting opportunity for Durham, not least the prospect of thousands of additional jobs on this site and a role to play in our economy in years to come. Chairman, we have continued our Durham Place of Life campaign over recent weeks, which has included a Durham Scottish coverage supplement in the National Times newspaper over the Christmas New Year period, and another live broadcast from two of our beautiful locations yesterday, namely the Durham Coast and Warham Park. Can I also draw members' attention to the first exhibition in the new gallery space at the Gallow Theatre, which features the work of young children in schools, nurseries and early year settings in East of the county. Entitled Into the Light, inspired by Lumiere, is our campaign to shine the light on all the duration of county Durham. I'd like to commend the work of the children, their teachers, art educator and councilball early year staff. The exhibition runs until the end of the run and is a stunning display of the amazing work that young people can achieve. Finally, can I also draw members' attention to the exhibition in the Durham Room, which marks Coral Falls Memorial Day, which is commemorated on the 27th of January each year. There is the exhibition outside, and I'm also aware that there are events taking place at Durham Town Hall on Saturday, I believe, and also in the Cathedral Host event, which is does for young people each year, which I think is particularly important, and that also will be taking place. And I will be very pleased to be attending that event at the end of this week. Thank you.
Thank you to the council. Does any member have any questions on the report to come on? No questions? We move on to item six on the agenda, questions from area action partnerships. Can I ask the head of legal and justice? Legal and democratic services, to explain the procedure, please, regarding the AAP questions.
Thank you Chairman, good morning everybody. Questions have been received from two area action partnerships, and these will be displayed in turn on the screen shortly. The chairman would invite the AAP representative to ask their question, and then the relevant portfolio holder will respond. There will be no discussion on the matter once the question has been answered, and no supplementary questions will be allowed. Replies are also posted on the council's website.
The first question for the dearest meeting is being submitted by the Three Towns Area Action Partnership. Can I invite Sandy Jenny, the AAP coordinator, to ask the question, please?
Thank you Chair. There have been significant changes in the local area over the last few months with the opening of the new living store and the relocation of the coast office into the new apartments on East Bridge Street. The work plans to renew Aldi supermarket on the site for the form of Queen Street Deco in the town centre. Is it possible to provide an update on this development and any other plans of improvement in the town?
Can I ask the portfolio holder to respond, please?
Thank you Chair, and thank you Sandy and the Three Towns AAP for your questions. In terms of the regeneration effort in progress, pleased to see that the recent investments you've noted include the support of a local retailer to take on the coast office operation, continue to follow the master plan priorities that were established in November 2012. As well as working to support these developments, we're continuing to work with Aldi to help them realise their plans for a new store on the Queen Street side. And I understand there should be an announcement at Times deals for the development of the new store in the next few weeks. To tie in with the post store, we're currently concluding some of the improvement works we've been undertaking around the town with the final basic works underway at Elliot Street. The refurbishment of the Crook Civic Centre is due to be completed at the end of March, and this will see around 460 staff working from a central centre building, which should also assist in retaining and attracting further retailers to the town. We're also continuing to look at ways we can support regeneration in all towns and villages across the county. Meetings have been set up to hold discussions with local members across the county, including the Three Towns AAP, to help shape these future plans.
Thank you to the council, Mr Marshall. The second question comes from the Durham Air Reaction Partnership. Can I invite the AAP coordinator, John Murphy, to ask the question, please?
Thank you Chairman, Happy New Year to everybody. It's nice to see Sealy Marina and the Sealy Front generally becoming a popular attraction for visitors. We were wondering, are there any other tourism initiatives being explored within the boroughs of Ayrington in general?
Can I ask the portfolio holder to respond, please?
Thank you Chair. I'd like to thank the Durham AAP and John for the question. Colleagues, this is a good news story. In tourist terms, the Durham coast is one of the fastest growing areas in the county. Latest figures show that 3.16 million people visited the coast in 2016, which was up by 3% on 2015. These visitors spent £120.7 million, which is also up by 3% on 2015. Investments in Sealy Marina and the Sealy Front have supported the growth of the visitor economy, and Durham is becoming increasingly valued by visitors as a high quality rural and coastal destination that dates out on short breaks. The Sealy Water Sports Centre, which has only been operating since July 2017, further enhances the coast's reputation as a destination for outdoor activities. The Durham Heritage Coast Team and Visit County Durham work together to develop and promote walking, cycling, water sports and nature tourism on the coast. This was given a welcome boost with the announcements of a successful bid to the Heritage Luxury Fund for the Seascape Scheme. The scheme will improve access to the beaches, explore the shipwrecks and habitats beneath the waves, improve biological recording through citizen science, construct a coastal conservation centre, track marine litter and create opportunities for local people and visitors to enjoy being on and in the sea. And in addition, the coast is set to benefit from the England Coastal Path. A new walking route that will follow the entire coast of England. For the first time, people will have the right access around England's open coast. This includes where appropriate, any land other than the trail itself, which forms part of the coastal margin. The path has been opened in sections, but will, when completed, be the longest coastal path in the world. It will be a natural trail. 94% of all visitors to the Durham coast are day visitors. The lack of visitor accommodation on the coast makes it difficult to increase dwell time and convert day visitors into overnight visitors. However, discussions are taking place with a number of private sector partners to develop visitor accommodation in Sealy and the surrounding areas. And a hotel and accommodation study for Sealy is currently underway, which will highlight opportunities for investment to potential developers. As I said in the beginning Chair, this is a good news story for County Durham.
Thank you for that. That concludes the questions from the AAPs, and can I thank them for submitting their questions and the coordinators for attending them. Item seven on the agenda, questions from the public. There are no public questions for the dearest meeting. Petitions, there are no petitions for consideration. Item nine on the agenda, to report to the Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you. Chairman, this report from Cabinet includes issues considered as releasing on the 30th of December, which took place at Durham Town Hall. Items listed on page one of the reports, including the regular performance management report, second quarter, which provides a summary of indicators across all areas of the council's work and the AAP partners, most of which, I'm pleased to say, remain positive in the continuing challenging climate of austerity. Chairman, very happy to take the report, thank you.
I've received two questions, you know, France. The first question was submitted by Commissioner Wilkes, is displayed on the screen. Commissioner Wilkes, can you please ask a question?
Thank you Chairman. After all members' attention to item three within the report which goes to Cabinet, the performance indicator one hundred converts to the number of fatal kiln door series of injuries caused by accidental accidents on our roads. The figure shows that the performance has been red deteriorated from the previous period. A large number of accidents occur in the winter months when the weather conditions are part horror, and we have a positive record in County Durham on winter maintenance, which helps to keep the public safe from injuries of the number of accidents. However, on mutualised states this winter, a gritting group had been caught and there have been accidents the first time in 15 years. We have never been contacted before by residents in this area about single accidents. Prior to this winter, and without any consultation with county councillors, the council removed the gritting group, having printed the new groups on council disrobes and then related the tokens. The council says it has had issues last winter with gritting groups of half cars. However, at no time did it contact us to seek to find a solution or even tell us that there was an issue. Nor did it back to residents to tell them the group was being caught. Little in anything has been done to work with residents so far to solve the problem. To our knowledge, so far this winter, there have already been two accidents on this group in a total of five cars have fallen, a number of them missing. In all these cases, the eyes were a contributing factor. Three months after, the council still has not informed residents on this group that it is no longer gritted or wired. The council's winter maintenance policy does not include any requirement to consult with residents before removing any group of the road. Nor is a risk assessment report required. If we are to ensure that accident rates in County Durham are kept to the absolute minimum, it is imperative that changes to our services are consulted on and carried out with visibility to villagers. I would therefore ask the portfolio holder, please, to change council policy so that there is a requirement to consult with county councillors and residents before considering removing the gritting groups, and to ensure a risk assessment is carried out with all due when carrying out such removals to services. In relation to question two, Mr Chair, could I please thank our director and council steers for intervening in the last few days so that residents had to be notified for reasons for this action, and they're going to assist us in trying to find a solution. Although it shouldn't really be taken three months for us to get to this point, I do thank them for helping to try and move this issue forward. Are you, Chair?
Well, unfortunately, the portfolio holder, Council Stevens, isn't present today due to illness. So can I ask the Cabinet's support member, Council Rob York, to respond, please?
Thanks Chair, and thanks for this question that was brought under item three of the Cabinet report, Quarter Two Performance Management Report. Quarter two of May, April, May and June, not been asked to be said one of our busy periods of windy gridding, but an important question nevertheless. Road safety is of paramount importance to the council. We are not aware of any serious road accidents on these roads recently, but if there are any road safety issues, we will investigate. We review our gritting groups at the end of every winter maintenance season. Unfortunately, for safety reasons, it was considered necessary to take Cothersman Road, Linders Farm Road and Fethersman Road from our gritting network this winter. This is due to the high volume of on-street parking on these narrow residential roads during the evening and early hours of the morning, when gritting is usually undertaken. Local members were informed before the start of the winter maintenance season and offered meetings with highway officers to discuss any concerns. During the 2016 summer and winter season, our gritter driver reported that at least 50% of gritting runs, he had major issues with on-street parking and had to take evasive actions. There is also a wider road safety issue regarding the rest of the route if the gritter is delayed or unable to complete a route, which we cannot allow to happen. As mitigation for the cessation of gritting, we have provided three additional soul pins to complement the ones already in situ. Following the recent severe winter weather, we have written to residents to explain why these changes have been necessary and to support that remains available. I would like to take this opportunity, following the severe winter weather last week, to thank all our staff involved for their excellent all our staff involved for their excellent work in clearing out our primary roads and footpaths of snow and dikes.
Thank you for that, councillor York. The second question comes from councillor Liz Maddison. The question is being displayed on the screen and handed by councillor Maddison. Ask a question, please.
Thank you, Chair. On page sixteen of the report from Cabinet meeting of thirteenth of December, it has been recognised that children's social demand continues to be high, with further review needed on social work and care flow levels. Reports indicate that level four children in need of open cases have risen by five hundred and fifty-two children between September two thousand and sixteen and June two thousand and seventeen to a level of three thousand six hundred and ten more children, and that the number of referrals are also off from last year. Although down at September two thousand and seventeen, level four children in need of open cases, as per statistics, are still up by four hundred and one cases since September two thousand and sixteen, putting increased pressure on children's social services. As there appears to be an upward trend in the need of children, which is part from the local authority, could you advise what programmes are in place to improve the life chances for these children, working with parents where needed to encourage more foster families and adoptive parents to come forward?
Thank you for your question. Can I ask the portfolio holder to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. And can I thank councillor Maddison for her question. We do recognise the increased demands made upon children's services across our county, but we also recognise that there are increased demands from children's services right across the country. And for many of us, I'm sure, that this increase in demand promises no surprise after seven years of welfare reform. And it's worth noting, and a telling point, I think, that two-thirds of children living in poverty are in working families. We are demanding a number of programmes to improve the life chances of children and young people in our county. Young babies are particularly vulnerable to the use and early assessment intervention and support work carried out during the antenatal period can help minimise any potential risk of harm. Where a coordinated approach by agencies will be required to ensure that the appropriate support is in place during pregnancy to best protect the baby before and following birth, a newly created social work pre-birth interventions team is being created. The team will work with parents during the early stage of pregnancy where there is a clear identified risk of potential harm to the child following birth. And during this period, assessment and intensive support to parents will be provided with the aim of making the best decision regarding the potential risk of harm to the child following birth and whether it is in the best interest of the child to commence care procedures. We're also putting into place a new edge of care service, and this will work with families of teenagers where there is a risk of family breakdown. The service will deliver two primary functions: the coordination and provision of family group conferencing, and the provision of roundabout and intensive support into families to prevent older children, predominantly teenagers, coming into care, and will work with children and young people aged eleven to seventeen and with their families. The service will offer a respite care and overnight emergency accommodation where necessary, together with support directly into the family home to help the family overcome difficulties and challenges and to keep the young persons at home. The Children and Young People Service has consistently faced challenges in recruiting and retaining experienced social workers. And again, I want to point out that this is not just in County Durham, this is across the country. It is a problem that all local authorities have been experiencing over a fair amount of time. We know this, and so we have, as a result, put in an active recruitment and retention programme in place, managed through the Raising the Bar Group chaired by Carol Hayne, who is head of assessment and safety and services. And we now have arranged a bridge, Chair, into social work qualifications to ensure a workforce. We have a social work academy that supports newly qualified social workers ready to start work each year, including traditional university programmes. We've got Step Up to Social Work and Frontline, and we expect to be one of the first local authorities in England to offer an apprenticeship in social work from autumn twenty eighteen. This is very innovative, Chair, and this is where we can get some of our own qualified workers who are working with families into a social work qualification programme. Stable staffing is one of the characteristics of effective social work. I think we can all understand that. And all of these initiatives have reduced baby deaths. And myself and my Cabinet support member, councillor Laura McGinn, have also been meeting social workers and discussing with them their work, their aspirations, and their qualifications and career development. Durham County Council Services and partner organisations have formed a multi-agency child poverty working group in response to the increasing levels of child poverty across County Durham. I'm going to grant some of that child poverty working group. And a plan on a page has been developed to address child poverty, including supporting schools to address the cost of a school day, training for a clan of staff to have conversations with families about financial support available, including debt management and credit unions, and providing holiday activity schemes which include food during school holidays. The plan also aims to address supporting parents into employment through access to adult learning programmes and providing information regarding financial support available to support child parents. These are all things which will help families. The One Point Service also works closely with secondary schools through the Team Around the Schools Programme, in which array of activities and programmes are delivered in school for vulnerable pupils, including those at risk of child sexual exploitation, risk of exclusions due to poor behaviour or poor attendance. The service has currently supported two thousand three hundred children. With regards to fostering, we are very aware of the need to recruit more foster carers and adoptive parents to meet the needs of our increasing number of looked after children. As well as the more traditional broad approach, which has given us the many fantastic carers we currently have, we are also now taking a more limited targeted approach to recruitment, putting people at the heart of what we do, using a combination of press, digital advertising, and community outreach to reach those who we know could offer loving homes and children need. This has increased our foster carer base this year, including the diversity in the types of foster carers. Once again, I stress that this upward trend described by councillor Maddison is countrywide. And I'd like to draw your attention as well to an article in The Guardian today, which highlights the issue of child poverty, because I'm absolutely certain that there are links there that we also might have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Does any member have any questions on the report?
Chair, now, just a second. The question that councillor Wilkes asked you put back on the screen, please, so just to have some clarity around item one here. And this is something that could affect any one of us in this room. We're not saying we weren't told about the change to the gritting route, but we were told after the gritting route, documents have been printed and everything has been agreed. And what we're asking on behalf of every member in here, that as councillors, we are consulted before a cabinet, so we know what's going on in that area, because this could happen at any time during the campaign.
Councillor Wood, I remind you, that response has already been made. Response has been made, please sit down. No report, please, and number item ten, Members' Allowance Scheme.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. This report dates council as the outcomes of the improved Members' Allowances on the two independent remuneration panel for two thousand and eighteen nineteen. The report also seeks council agreement to rescind the allowances in two thousand and eighteen nineteen, which has to be agreed by the thirty-first of March each year. Background is set out in paragraph two in the report, and the details of the panel's deliberations are set out in paragraph five. There were two upcoming calls and representations made to the panel are set out in paragraph seven of the report, and the information considered by the panel is set out in paragraphs eight and nine, including instructions from the local authorities. The panel met twice in October and December, and having considered the information set out in the report, recommends to the council that there is no increase to allowances for twenty years in nineteen. Council must have regard to the panel recommendations when agreeing in scheme. Scheme of allowances is set out in appendix two of the report, and the recommendation is set out in paragraph twelve.
Thank you, Phil Young. Do any members have any questions on the report, please? Can we move the report?
As the Chair of the Constitution works through our formally recommended recommendations.
Form me second, Chairman.
Any questions on this report? Can I have the Council to agree Members' Allowance Scheme for two thousand and eighteen nineteen, taken into account the report produced by the independent remuneration panel? We move on to item eleven, motion is under notice. We have one motion for today's meeting, and the motion will be displayed on the screen. Can I have councillor Mark Wilkes to move his motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. I've had quite a busy morning calling this morning. At five past seven, I was trying to explain to BBC Radio New Trust and BBC T while I was trying to ring this motion, but I was trying to make sure my little one didn't wake up because I'm telling you what I'm doing. The fact that so many people have taken such an interesting motion tells me that there's a ground floor of opinion out there that something must be done to tackle the waste of plastic, and that they want to see action at a local level. I've also been asked to consider strengthening the motion with cross parts of working group or other measures to identify any action we can take as a matter of urgency. But I do believe that we may not be able to do this, having spoken to the Chair of the Treasury in New Hampshire, I found it extremely, extremely good, is John, shall we say. So, why this motion? Well, to start with, right now, there are fifty thousand pieces of plastic per square mile floating on our ocean, so that's fifty thousand pieces per square mile. We have fifty thousand pieces of plastic floating around the centre of Europe or sea or offshore. We'd be on the phone with one in a fashion office and one getting in on the other phone for all of our residents, don't we, sorry, not? The reality is that this plastic is polluting our environment to alarming levels, and if we do nothing, in less than twenty years, a weight of plastic floating around on our ocean, as you just saw on the stage, is going away more than all of the sea life in our ocean combined. Jack, I absolutely disagree with you. If you've got a pen, Andy, if you write down the number seven on everybody, and then go twelve zeros backwards, how many pieces there are out there at the moment, and it's going up and up and up? This is due to my sea life, it's killing sea life, it's contaminating the sea, it's contaminating our food supply. And third of all, the fish that we actually bring out of the sea goes into other food supplies, it goes into animal feed, so it's, this is getting into chicken, into beef, into pork. It's unbelievable when you start to look at it, it's quite scary actually, when you start to look at it, just what's going on. Our land is polluted, our rivers, our shores, watercourses, it's killing wildlife, it's littering our drainage. And as one of the biggest local authorities in the country, in the fourth biggest economy in the world, we should be ahead of the game on this issue. We can cut down our single-use plastic consumption of the council, and we can influence our supply chain, the businesses we work with, businesses across this county. We can get the message out there to our five hundred thousand residents that we're listening, and we want them to help us and tackle this problem. And if we do this, every other council's going to follow suit. It makes good economic sense, good financial sense, and it's morally the right thing to do. In years to come, our children and grandchildren are going to look back at these years and are going to wonder what on earth have we been doing? I'm going to quickly on this. Councillor Johnson mentioned the heritage causes and wonderful things that are going on there. And I know that councillor Short's been out there in this area clearing up all of the mess in that area, one and a half tonnes, from what I read, of rubbish, a lot of it plastic, it's quite staggering what's going on. And for those who think we might not be able to make a difference because the world is so big, consider this, Costa Rica is outlawing all single-use plastics by twenty twenty-one, and offering incentives to businesses. China has banned all imported plastic waste. Perhaps there's some, the burden of some in here might be comfortable, but Kenya has banned plastic bags, and anyone producing or selling them faces four years in jail and a thirty thousand pound fine. I'm not suggesting we go that far, Chair. And anybody actually using a plastic bag also faces a stiff fine. What I'm saying is that as a council, we can do a lot more, but this motion says is these are some of the things we can do.
You've got one that we may do, councillor Wood.
I'm hoping you'll also vote this motion so we can get on and try to make a difference. Thank you, Chair.
Is there a second of this motion? There is, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, it's my pleasure to second this motion because as environmentalists, this is something I feel very strongly about. More statistics, I'm afraid. Single-use plastics and disposable plastics are used once, then thrown away. This includes items such as food packaging, bottles, plastic cups and straws. The world produces nearly three hundred million tonnes of plastic every year, half of which is single-use, and we currently recover only five percent of the plastics we produce. About thirteen million tonnes of plastic per year find its way to the world's oceans. Faced with these statistics, not one of us can sit back and be complacent, bearing in mind the situation can only deteriorate, given the imposition of channel restrictions on importing plastic waste to recycle. Whereas residents can do their bit to make a difference, it is up to Durham County Council to show that we take this threat to the environment seriously. I therefore ask that members vote for this motion in the hope that we can emphasise Durham County Council's altogether greener credentials.
Thank you. Councillor Wood, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move an amendment to the motion, and I would agree with councillor Wilkes this morning, he says you're right, I have done a good job. Also, right on another point as well, that addressing concerns of prevalence of single-use plastics is very high, with priority for increased number of residents in County Durham and beyond. I think it does warrant a closer look, but I would like to make the amendment which I would approve the process and get it better off at the end of it. And that's it. And I'll say a few words, my... I was speaking back in November, then by the system of the group, it's important that the council apply a change strategy and a tactical plan. And I think that offers the perfect opportunity to incorporate issues that have been raised this morning, certainly when it was considered that both the plan and the strategy are common thing, the round current purchase and contracts. But the strict function of this council offers the opportunity to take all sides of issues like this, and also have the application of voice in the payoffs in County Durham, and also give the opportunity for those concerns to be addressed in a timely and effective manner. So for those reasons, Chair, and also when show a deep involvement to the early stages of the children, I would like to amend the motion this morning to the effect that further issues passed raised this morning to cooperate with you, so that the board can consider it. I'm torn to promote the motion, to let the board motion as amended, but in the first line, I would propose not to remove the words 'full council', as though we cooperate with you, the scrutiny management board. Those words, Chair, form the...
Thank you for that. Is there a second of the amendments?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'd like to formally second the amendments, and in doing so, I'd just like to remind members that this council is fully committed to reducing waste and to sustainable procurement. As well as already mentioned back in 2017, we reviewed our climate change delivery strategy through the scrutiny process and we delivered policy that prioritises key actions towards a sustainable future right up until 2030. As Councilwoman Wilkes has already said, the necessary use of single-use plastics has a detrimental effect on the environment, but not just for this country, or indeed the country, it's right the way across the world, and that's why it's on such an important issue. It does warrant a much greater consideration by the corporate overview and scrutiny management board. The scrutiny process will allow both elected members and members of the public to give this proper consideration, Chair, and make appropriate recommendations, so I urge all members to support the amendment and allow this to happen and give this the attention that it deserves. Thank you.
And it's been brought by your disallowed counsel.
Thank you, Chair. Just before we move on to the, those who've registered to speak, I'll run through the procedure for dealing with amendments. So now that the amendment has been moved and seconded, it's the amendment that's displayed on the screen that will now be debated, so whether or not the matters are moved to the corporate, A, reviewing scrutiny management board. No further amendment can be moved until this one has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on the motion, so Councilwoman Wilkes, as mover of the original motion, has the right to reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If the amendment is carried, it will become the substantive motion, and if the amendment falls, we go back to debating the original motion.
Counselor Chappell?
Thank you, Chairman. I welcome the amendments, because that was my principal criticism of the motion, is that this is a big subject and requires really quite a broad-ranging review. David Atford got the award, I heard on the news this morning, for his Blue Planet series principally, this episode on plastics. I have to confess to me, it's been limited to the media coverage since that episode. Most of the seaborne plastic material comes from handful of rivers in Africa, Mexico. I have to say that the last time I checked the River Tees by the castle, I didn't see a single plastic container going down the river. I can't speak for the good purpose of stopping rivers from... And I'm not arguing that it's not us causing the waste, therefore we should do nothing, but I think the media coverage has been limited in that it does not recognise what we do as a council and many other councils to prevent waste going to landfill. It's not just in the rivers, the stuff that is recycled goes to landfill. We need to do much more to review and improve our recycling situation, there are continuing issues across the county with contamination, we need to get those recycling regs up, we need to be enlightened and have anything that improves and reduces the amount going to landfill. Clearly we have to review because the Chinese are stopping taking plastic recyclers anyway, which will affect the market, of course. Thankfully, this council has had the wisdom to sign to a long-term contract, it's not an immediate hit for us, but it's something that we would like to work on. I would also say, let's, can we get away from this simplistic thing, please, of plastic bottles floating in the ocean, that the things that are causing the damage to the plank and the food chain are microfibres which come from acrylic fibres, and the best way to avoid that is to stop buying clothes with acrylic fibres and speaking on behalf of all wool producers in my fashion. And the damage, get them to wearing wool suits and cotton shirts, please, if you continue with this, by the favour. And I also say, we should just look at single-use plastics, what about single-use cardboard? It is my lawn on occasion, it's fallen back down on the way back, probably from a burger or a burger, and if you eat it, your burger is served...
One minute's left, can we do that?
...inside a paper box, and then they put nice little paper things on the tray as well. So basically, for the sake of a rock, a minute's worth of eating, which would take 3,000 small things. There are three cases of paper and cardboard waste in there. It's all I can say, okay, it's fine, it doesn't matter, all big, actually, it's fine, but it does matter, because even if you recycle paper, you need energy to recycle it, you need chemicals to recycle it, different climate costs. So I very much support the amendment motion, I hope that that's scrutiny being given, we'll be fairly broad, fairly wide range, but let's not forget the recycling work that we do in this county, and let's make sure we emphasise that and build on that, and I think we're doing a lot, yes, we could do more, but let's not pretend that there's this sea of waste going down the river.
That's your time, Counselor.
Into the North Sea. Thank you, Chair.
The next speaker, of course, is Councilor Tinsley.
Thank you, Chair. I think I want to find out what Councilor Wilkes felt like this morning on the radio. Okay, I think anybody who did watch Blue Planet Two couldn't feel removed by that series, but those images of turtles wrapped in plastic and things like that. I did just want to take members back a few years to the coalition government and when that was formed, and there was a gentleman by the name of Chris Hooman, who was a Liberal Democrat, and he had a couple of years at, I think it was Department of Energy and Climate Change, so he was pushing the green agenda for that government, that was before he had to spend a little bit of time at Majesty's pleasure, because he was trying to fiddle his peddling points and pass them over to his wife. But the important point here is that, there was something in the back of my head about the Grendale, and it was scrapped, and I wondered why, and I had a look at it, and the National Audit Office prepared a report, and the National Audit Office said that it cost the taxpayer £400 million and did not deliver energy or carbon sales. So I think this is an important point here, and it's a reason why we've always got to be so sceptical, and a reason why I'll be supporting the amendment, and it should go to scrutiny, because there's a danger with some schemes that they can cost a lot but deliver a little. I think by passing it to scrutiny, we'll make sure that it's not the case here. I do have another concern as well, there's a possibility here. I think we all know when it comes to the green agenda, politicians like ourselves, there's always that opportunity of the photo opportunity, shall we say, I think we've all done it as well, in terms of, we've done a little pic and put it on Facebook and maybe planted a few trees in the local park or something like that. But I think the one you remember is the famous one of David Cameron, hugging a husky up in Greenland or Finland or somewhere like that, when he was wanting to kick off the Marine Corps' green credentials. I do just have a concern, Chair, that tomorrow morning, I'm going to open my copy of the Echo, and there'll be a photograph there, it'll be Councilor Wilkes, and you'd be seeing her, full wet suit, hugging a dolphin. I do know my role, Counselor, but the sentiment behind this motion is entirely correct, we just think that we do get it right, so I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Anyone members wish to speak on the amendment? I've got no others for a chest to speak, and Councilor Wilkes, you can respond to the amendments, remember you do so in closing the debate on the amendment.
Thank you, Chairman. I can assure you, my suit's made of wool, I'm not sure where the wool comes from, I'm afraid. I too will be absolutely shocked if I find photographs of me hugging a dolphin or any other sea life in the Northern Echo, because they haven't even got in touch with me about the person they said I put out. And I would be very worried, I'm starting to wonder whether we do see photos tomorrow, then I'll start to wonder who's masquerading as a fisherman or a marine harper. I'm more than happy to accept the amendment, Chair.
Thank you. We've got the amendment. Are there any opposeds to go against this motion? If so, can you all agree to accept the amendment? Right, the amendment's accepted, thank you. And that concludes business, no?
Sorry, Chair, there is one more procedural item, so that amendment, having been accepted and agreed by the council, now forms a substantive motion, so we do actually need to take a vote on it for the recommendation to be carried. So the usual process applies, we'll open the voting. Once you hear the beep, the voting's open, if you're in favour of the amendment, so the recommendation to go to overview, corporate overview and scrutiny management board, press one, those against, press two, and anyone wishing to abstain, press three. If you press the wrong button, just simply press the right one and that will amend your vote.
The vote's closed. Right, the amendment is carried. We've got item 12, questions for members, there are no questions for members, but to the...
Point of order, Chair? I'd like it to be noted, I did put a question, to be put to full council at the end, in respect of letter words, but with legal intervention, it was ruled out of order by yourself, but I'd like it to be noted, Chair, I did put a question.
I'd just like a response to that. Council, you're well aware, as the former councillor, you abide by the rules, you don't bend them, you go along with them, and advice we received from the legal was that there's no value to accept your question. That concludes today's meeting, thank you for your time.